I will open this June 22 school committee meeting. We were just in executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, specifically regarding school secretaries, custodians and cafeteria workers. Also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, including superintendent, director of finance and operations, director of instruction and integration, director of services, accounting specialist, out of district coordinator, data manager, secretary of finance and operations, administrative assistant to the superintendent, director of technology, network administrator, human resources assistant, payroll and human resource manager, director of facilities, high school principal, middle school principal, Dale Street principal, Wheelock principal, Memorial principal, middle school assistant principal, high school assistant principal, director of food service, athletic director and director of social emotional learning. All right.
It's a long list.
That is a long list. Sorry. Thank you. Alrighty, so right now we are going to have public input. And I ask folks, um, we're going to have general public input now. And I'm going to read the statement that introduces that and how that works really. But I ask that if folks have, um, any comments related to diversity, equity and inclusion, most specifically, under any of those topics, to please, I will open up public input during that section when we get to it on, on the agenda. And after, after that presentation, so we can address it in, in, in a context that might be, that hopefully will be helpful. So if folks have any public input right now, thank you and for joining us. Um, but citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business, not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented. Yeah. All right. So there's nothing in Q and A right now. So I think, um, we'll go right into the approval of minutes unless that changes. All right, um, Tim, would you like to take over regarding the minutes?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the workshop on June 3rd. For approval of minutes for executive session. On June, actually, let me, for the workshop on June 3rd. And approval of minutes for the policy subcommittee on May 21st, as well as the policy subcommittee on June 4th, 2020, which would be released after this meeting. As the first, and then approval for minutes for the executive sessions on June 4th, 2020, June 10th, 2020, October 22nd, 2018 as amended, and April 2nd, 2018 as amended. And I guess the June 4th and June 10th executive session minutes would still be held until these negotiations are complete.
I moved.
And the team here can tell me if that makes sense, because it, uh, there was a couple older ones for executive session.
Yep, completely makes sense. And thank you for doing those. And Andrea. Um, Megan, I think we had a motion.
I moved.
Um, do we have a second? Leo, I hear a hand raise.
Second.
He a hand raise. All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Um, Jess Riley.
Uh, aye.
Leo Brem.
Aye.
Megan Glenn.
Aye.
Tim Knight.
Aye.
And Anamayo Shaybrook. Aye. All right. Wonderful. Minutes approved. Um, new business, Dr. Marsden, 2019, 2020 retirement recognitions.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So like a lot of things this, this spring, this doesn't seem fitting to be recognizing our, our teachers that are retiring through Zoom. Typically, we have the teachers attend the meeting and they get a really nice plaque from the school committee and then we take a nice picture and it's great to tweet out. But unfortunately, um, the current situation isn't allowing us to do that. But I still think, you know, we all, we all want to recognize our retirees for the wonderful job that they've done for our kids over the years. The retirees tonight have 106 years of combined service to the town of Medfield and to the students of Medfield. So I just want to, I know that they've been, I think they've been promoted to panelists. So I'll go through the names and then, Madam Chair, if you want to recognize anyone, if they want to say anything, we could do it that way if you want. First person I'd like to recognize is Mike Mason for 31 years of teaching and coaching for the Medfield Public Schools, and most recently as a fifth grade teacher at Dale Street School. Sue McAvoy for 20 years kindergarten teacher Memorial. John Haycock for 22 years as a librarian at Blake School, Blake Middle School. Nancy Sheimer, who I know put a Q and A up there that she has to leave at 6:00. So hopefully she's still on with us for 17 years as a nurse at Wheelock. And Julie Lowry for 16 years as a teacher at, at Dale Street, but most recently as a technology and integration person, which innovation integration person, which she did a wonderful job with that too. So I just want to thank them for, you know, their service, the great job they've done for our community and for our kids. And I want to wish them a happy, healthy and long retirement. And again, I wish we were doing this in person and not over Zoom. But if anyone wants to say a few words, they certainly can at this time.
Yeah, I, I wonder if, if some of them can get beamed over. Is that what we were requesting?
Yeah, I, I think they're actually panelists.
No, they're not.
They're not now? Okay.
No. So, oh, Julie.
I see Julie.
Julie.
Hi, Julie.
Julie.
Hi. I would just like to thank all of you for a wonderful 16 years at Medfield. I have loved every day, every day, the community, the kids, the staff. It's a wonderful community. Thank you for all your support and for allowing me to be a teacher for your wonderful students. I have loved every minute. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there's Mike. Hey, Mike.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to say thank you as well for all your support over the years and look forward to seeing you, you know, who knows, at a sporting event here and there. I'm sure I'll be seeing you again next year, I hope. Thank you to all the students and to all the parents for your support. It's been, uh, I can't believe, every once in a while, I think about 31 years. I just, it's, it's amazing. But, uh, but thanks again for everything. Thanks to the administration and my fellow teachers as well.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
There's Nancy.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi. I, I can't tell if I'm on, but I guess I am.
You're on.
Okay. So anyway, thank you everyone for your support, especially Dr. Marsden and principals at Wheelock. Those teachers have been great. So it's been a great 17 years. It went really fast. And I'm sorry that it ended in this kind of Zoom fashion, but, um, I hope everyone stays well. And thanks for recognizing all of us.
Thank you, folks. I feel like you, you, like our seniors and our eighth graders and our fifth graders. You know, there's, there's been something, a moment that has been taken from us, or taken from you, rather. And I just want to thank you profoundly for the service, your time, your talent, your passion and dedication to all our students. You're a fabric of our community and the fabric of our students. So thank you and all the very best to you guys.
I'm hoping it's coincidence that each of you have had my children in class. Sue, Sue had them twice. And I'm hoping that the Rileys didn't wear you out. Very much. And I, and I wish Sue were here, but I will drop her note.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lovely. All right. So at this time, Owen, if you.
Sue is here. I'm sorry.
Where?
I just, uh, she just came into question and answer.
Oh.
She says, I am here.
Oh.
SMC.
Oh, Owen, do you mind popping her over pretty please?
She is.
Oh, lovely. Thanks.
And then I'm muted. She's muted.
Maybe she has to do it.
Yeah, I'm requested that she unmute.
I'm unmuted.
Hello.
See, I can't.
Hello.
Why not go out with a little humor, right, my friends? Yes, I have had two of your children. I'm so happy to be here and thank you so much. I feel like I've been a very lucky woman. I have had a career that I loved. And it's so much easier to do a job when you love what you do. And it's so much easier to do a job when you are in a community that supports you. And so I was able to work with some amazing teachers, but also the rest of the staff, teaching assistants from Andrea to custodians and all the amazing children that traveled through my room. And yes, two of them I remember very well. So I'm leaving here with some wonderful memories, but also leaving very satisfied and happy and thankful that I did my 20 years here with all of you. And who knows, I may show up again someday in another way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
All the best. Lovely. Now, Owen, would you mind pretty please, um, popping over the following folks? Um, I don't know if Amanda Spears is there. I should check. But Amanda Spears, Claudia Rosen, Kim Price, Lynn Clifford, Erica Beisler. And, um, yeah, I think that's it for now. So, so yeah, Erica. Kim Price. So there's Claudia. Oh, hey, Amanda. I do see you now. Great. Oh, there's Erica.
Is that everyone?
Uh, no, Lynn Clifford. So let's see, Amanda, Claudia, Kim Price. I see Kim. Okay. Great. I think we have everyone. Super. So thank you. Our, the next item on our agenda is tonight, we'd like to publicly acknowledge how fortunate we are to have a supporting organizations that enrich the educational experience of our children beyond the school budget. And tonight we have spokespeople for these supporting organizations. And I'd like to give them a moment to really highlight all that they've contributed to our school community. So right now, I would first like to invite Amanda Spears from the Medfield Coalition for Public Education.
Hi, everybody. I'm Amanda and along with Patty Allen, we are going to be the co-presidents for next year. I apologize for my appearance. Apparently I took summer break very seriously. So end of virtual learning is celebrated at our house. Over the 1920 school year, thanks to the creativity and dedication of our staff and students, MCPE was proud to grant 20 grants for $108,000 total. We focused our grants on six areas, educational, curriculum, whole child, facility, theme and professional development to continue to meet our mission. Over at Memorial, we co-funded or after the PTO did a pilot Ladybug dot cameras for every classroom. At Wheelock, we also co-funded with the PTO a renovation to the Wheelock library space with some innovative seating and shelving. At Dale, to support their new tech integration and innovation, we supplied some Turing tumblers, which I still can't say the right way, for some coding practices. Over at Blake, renovation on the auditorium lighting system that we're really excited to support. And then at the high school, we had two students, Hannah Busco and Helen Monnet, who actually presented a grant to us that we funded for sustainability. So it's a little bit on hold right now because of our current situation, but it has to do with supplies in the cafeteria, replacing trades, looking at different silverware options and things like that that they brought to us on senior project. So we've had a great year. We're looking forward to next year to continue to hopefully support Medfield the best we can. Thanks for letting us present tonight.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank you for all you guys have done. And you had a great spread in the Hometown Weekly as well.
That's on the year. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Amanda.
Super. So right now, if we could, um, hear from the KDA 8 PTO president, Claudia Rosen. Hey, Claudia. Maybe we'll come back to Claudia. Yeah, let's go back. Oh, sorry. No, that's.
I couldn't unmute. I was stuck. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. As the MCPE has said, we just want to thank all the teachers, parents, kids. We just are thankful for all of their support and we're thankful for your support from the school committee. And we couldn't do it without you. Over the course of this year, it's not exactly the year we anticipated. And I kind of put our fundings through to March 13th and we sort of did not go back to school. But it really kind of stopped for us around February vacation time. So we have total spend through March, I guess, was $96,000. Grants funded were over $62,000. And the breakdown for that is about 70% in student programs and educational enrichment, 28% staff support, and then 2% other administrative. And a lot of our programs happen for us at the end of the year. I think last year we were about 127, 28K in spend. So we are losing a big chunk of our spend for this year. And also some of those programs that we anticipated funding are going to be rolled over to next year. And hopefully we're actually back in the classroom and we can fund those. But it's, it's a really strange year. So, um, but also with this COVID, we've also been impacted on the revenue side too. So our fundraisers have been down this year because we couldn't do them in person. So hopefully we can get back on track next year too. But I will say our biggest spend for Blake was the media screen for the auditorium, a safe learning environment. For Dale, we had Kurt Jackson storytelling and there was some contingency funds for the FY 2021 school year. And I will say each of the elementary schools put away about $2,000 for next year. We can use for whatever purpose we, we need to help support in this time of COVID. So that is there. For Wheelock, Rob Sorrett and the Wheelock Library Shelves, we partnered with MCPE on a lot of those. Plymouth Interpreters, Plymouth Plantation in Rocky Woods are obviously a big expense for Wheelock. And for Memorial, Memorial School Art Case and the preschool music program. So that's sort of our wrap up in a year. Hopefully next year we can all be together sometime in school. So thank you so much for letting us present.
Lovely. Thank you so much, Claudia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Super. So right now, if we could have, I think, Kim, you are representing quite a few groups tonight. So I think your first group, if I could have you, um, report on the Medfield High School PTO, please.
Absolutely. Thank all of you for letting us, as everyone else said, present tonight and for your support and just keeping us going. Janie Boylan and I will be co-presidents next year for the high school PTO. This year, we ended up receiving about $14,500 in donations and we spent about $21,000. We did have a little bit of money. We didn't go, we, we aren't in the red. But basically we spend money on teacher luncheons. We have a teacher inspiration award. One of our big expenses is actually Spirit Week t-shirts, as everyone wears. But this year we are going to move forward and not, we're going to try to buy one t-shirt for all of the teachers and administrators at the school. So we don't buy one every year for them. So that's a big expense. We also funded the Medfield Talks, or I think we co-funded that, the Jim McCauley, Chris Heron, Screenagers. They helped with the all-night grad party vinyl, which I'll talk about later. The Franks Twins put in a grant for recycling bins. They are rising seniors, which was great. We helped pay for the National Science Teacher Conference, also World Language Libraries, Free Choice Learning. And during the pandemic, we actually, David Worthy reached out to us to have Rachel Simmons talk about pandemic parenting. And we also do $400 or $500 scholarships for seniors. Yeah, and that's, that was the high school PTO.
Fantastic. So you guys are ANGP presidents and, oh my, all right, we'll chat later.
Locked out. Yeah.
All right. Lovely. And then we'll come back to you again, Kim. But, um, right now, um, we've got Lynn and Erica from the Medfield Music Association. Welcome, ladies.
Hi. Hi, I'm Lynn Clifford. And I'm the co-president of the Medfield Music Association with Erica Beisler. Thank you for inviting Erica and me to share the MMA's contributions to the Medfield Music Program during the 2019 to 20 school year. The MMA supports music education in Medfield, kindergarten through high school, through fundraising and volunteer hours. And we're really proud of what the MMA accomplished this year. Thanks for our amazing volunteers, donors and community sponsors. A major goal for the MMA this year was to expand our reach to the elementary schools, offering funding and volunteers on the spot where needed. The MMA board and voting members were perhaps more excited than I've ever seen them when we approved an appropriation for music equipment and instrument upgrades for Memorial and Wheelock School earlier this year. The largest of these expenditures was for the purchase of a new portable sound system for Wheelock School. So their music makers can perform and hold assemblies wherever and whenever the mood strikes. And the MMA also purchased for the Wheelock Music Classroom, three sets of temple block stands, mallets, and six djembe drum stands. For the Memorial School Music Classroom, the MMA purchased two piano benches and a new tubano drum. Moving over to Dale School, the MMA was proud to provide startup funds for a new select oral ensemble and also to provide volunteer support for a first time event, the Dale Band, student teaching parents, which was really fun, students and their parents were at the high school, students giving their parents lessons. There were extra instruments there and we got a lot of funny pictures. And I think people laughed a lot and really enjoyed that. And we provided some volunteer support there. We hope to build on this momentum next year and will continue to seek ways in which the MMA can more robustly support elementary schools with volunteer presence and funding for equipment, instruments and programs. And now I'll turn this over to my co-president, Eric Beisler, to discuss MMA support of the Blake and High School music programs.
Ooh, Erica, we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Glad I didn't get too far. In addition to extending support at the elementary level, the MMA was very focused on providing broad and equitable support across the middle school and high school programs. We helped organize and fund spotlight events for all three major ensembles. These included Moxi Strings in January, which featured the return of Moxi Strings, a professional electric strings duo who conducted clinics with students during the day and performed with them in concert at night. In February, we hosted a cappella night when Berkley's on the Vox and student groups from Medfield and surrounding towns performed to a standing room only crowd. When COVID hit, we had also secured sponsors and begun planning and publicity for Jazz Night featuring trumpeter Alex Lee Clark. In addition to these events, we funded guest clinicians, the Blake Jazz Lab and the MHS Jazz Combo. We also provided startup funds for brand new percussion groups at both Blake and the Medfield High School. Finally, we provided over $6,000 in need-based and merit scholarships for grades six through 12. We are proud of the depth and the breadth of support the MMA was able to provide this year. And we are looking forward to working again with the music department and the administration to provide continued enrichment opportunities to our music students. Thank you.
Bertha, thank you.
Thanks, you, Lynn.
And last but not least is Kim again for the Medfield Theater, our Friends of, um, Friends of Theater Friends of.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you.
We keep changing it. So Friends of MHS Theater Society.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We, uh, this group is composed of about over, I don't know, we have a lot of volunteers, but we have over 100 students per year, over 100 students per year, working on this. It's such a great environment for all these kids. And we try to promote theater as a means of fostering an inclusive culture for education, leadership and social and emotional wellbeing. We, uh, unfortunately, we were probably the first group hit with COVID. We were ready to perform on Friday and COVID, everything stopped the Thursday before the show. So it was kind of a bummer. We had everything, I think the set is still up at the school. Sad to see, but we had everything ready to go, obviously, and no performance. So that kind of, you know, skews some of our things that we would have obviously made more money with. But we did have a total of 16,000 or $16,000 in expenditures this year. We did a theater writing workshop, which helped, if you're familiar with the Medfield After Dark, the seniors write and direct little skits. It's like an SNL type thing. And we had someone come in and actually help them do those and show them ways to, you know, keep it flowing and, you know, when to stop it and start it. So it was really beneficial. And if you haven't seen it yet, if you look on social media with the MHS Theater Society, you can watch our virtual mad. So the kids managed to put it all together with, um, you know, like acting at home and the directors put it together and made it. So it's definitely worth a watch. And we have also bought a lot of equipment, some studio monitors, microphones, stereo mixers. We always need batteries for the microphones, non-stop. We also, they have a room 105. The kids spent a lot of time there. So we got them a microwave because everyone needed their snacks after school of popcorn. And just covering some of the, the products, they like to slip covers for the couches and things like that. And always office supplies, which go missing all the time. We also help paints, painting, stage tape and things like that. A lot of our stuff comes from publicity, our purchases with all the yard signs, flyers, postcards, banners, things like that. Front of house, we also take care of that area, which is kind of make, we decorate it to make it look nice when everyone comes in. We do a lot of food. Tech Week is very intense. Kids are sometimes there from till 10 o'clock at night. So we feed them nice dinners and things like that. We also provide food for the Saturday, Tech Saturdays, which the kids attend as it runs from like nine o'clock to two o'clock and everyone eats some lunch. So we help with that. We also did a virtual banquet this year and also hand-delivered gifts and pins and all this good stuff to the seniors and all the other members. Delivered the goodies to all their houses of over 125 kids. And then that is about it for theater.
Bertha, did you want to highlight some ANGP stuff, even though it didn't happen? It did kind of happen?
It did kind of, like we, we organized it.
You morphed. You pivoted.
Pivot. Yep. A lot of pivoting this year. We obviously did not do our townwide mailer, which we would get a lot of donations from that. We also did not have our Roach Brothers fundraiser. We did get the grant for our vinyl, what we, after meeting with the new fire chief and the police chief. As you know, the walls are covered with a lot of paper. And there's a lot of kids in there and it's pretty tight. So they wanted to make sure that we had 50% fire retardant materials up there. So with Janie Boylan, my co-chair, we decided to invest in vinyl. So it's basically like the banners and we can just stick them up on the wall with magnets and then they can decorate on that. Those were not cheap, but they are reusable and we won't just be, you know, at the end of the night, throwing tons of stuff away. So that should help. The fashion show also did not happen. There were several people that had already bought tickets. Some asked for their money back, which was totally understandable and, you know, fine. But a lot of people did say, keep the ticket donation money, which was very kind. So with that, we had already kind of paid for everything for the party, except for the food and the rest of the entertainment. So then, once we found out, we decided to switch it and send out senior gift bags, which included, we put everything in a laundry bag that kids could use for school. And there was a Class of 2020 t-shirt, a Medfield mug, which was donated by Jim James, a book that was called, Don't Forget to Do Your Laundry or You'll Die, or something like that. But it was like quotes for kids going after school and. But it was like quotes for kids going after school and, you know, reminded them not to forget to do their laundry. Um, a rechargeable phone battery, a really nice one. And then we had hashtag Warrior Strong, uh, put on those. And, um, I'll say, oh, a Medfield blanket. And that was all delivered with a poster, um, as you probably saw if you attended the rolling rally, which was also on there. There was one for their car, and then one as a keepsake that we put on their front door. And we had a whole group of people deliver throughout the town. So that was our gift to the seniors. And then we switched even a little bit more and, um, helped the rolling rally committee. And we paid for, um, all the decorations for the rolling rally and got all the volunteers together and, um, helped with that in that way. So hopefully next year we'll, we'll figure out something.
I think everyone wants that rolling.
Yeah, that was a hit.
Maybe just a rolling rally, no party. We could just have a party on the turf.
But I think this whole presentation this evening with Amanda, Erica, Kim, Lynn, Claudia, um, this is just emblematic, a small snippet of, you know, what happens when the community comes together to support our schools and how, as a school district, we rely so much on outside organizations and how grateful we are for your support and the parents, um, that support you and the community members and organizations and businesses that support you as well, because we all benefit. And, um, anyways, we just wanted to publicly thank you for all that you do. And, um, I know there are some dicey moments, and there are some glorious moments, and, and it's all worth it. And, and again, we are most grateful. So thanks for popping in as well.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So our next, um, we, we've got our next presenter, an update from the Medfield Environmental Alliance. And Owen, would you mind pretty please popping over Jackie Alford? Jackie. There she is.
Hello.
Hi, Jackie.
Am I visible finally?
You are, you are. Sorry. Thank you for being so patient. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So would you mind giving us an update and enlightening us about your, your group?
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much for including me in this meeting. And I just wanted to very quickly, um, let you all know that we are trying to work with the schools on an individual level. So with the high school and each of the other schools to have a, um, contact for, um, the Green Team's initiative that Massachusetts has, so that we can share education about, uh, recycling and other environmental initiatives. But, um, just kind of bring it more to the forefront, forefront, I'm sorry, speaking too quickly. And we know that right now, between budgeting and everything else, this is not the highest priority. But we're grateful to at least let you know that, that we're hoping this can be on the agenda for the fall.
No, that's great, Jackie, and I appreciate your efforts and your group's efforts. And I think some, some students are involved and, um, also a teacher or two. So I think, again, this is one of those, um, organizations where we're, we're crossing, where we're connecting bridges.
Absolutely. I mean, um, we're linked in with the initiatives on, um, you know, more eco buildings. So obviously for the Dale Street Initiative and energy containment, um, it's all bundled in. But thank you so much. Um, and we, we hope to work with you in the fall.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Jackie.
Thank you.
You know, this is beyond the school calendar. So anyways, I appreciate everyone who has come in. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Does anyone have a question for Jackie? Are we?
I was just gonna say, if Jackie, if you want to just shoot me an email in the fall, we'll try to organize something so you can get a representative from each building. That wouldn't be a problem.
Thank you so much. I will do that. Thank you.
And congratulations. You're now.
Thank you.
You're now without kids in the district, right? As of?
Yes.
I cannot believe that.
Technically not until July 25th.
Right, exactly.
Still a priority, so thank you all.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you all your members. Alrighty, Dr. Marston, um, "Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion: Preparing Our Children to Thrive in Increasingly Globalized World Professional Development."
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we're gonna have Christine Power. And I think, I don't know if, um, I know Carrie Kyle, but I don't know if Zach actually could make it.
I saw Zach, I think, in the.
I think I saw him.
Yeah, Zach, I think Zach is on there too.
Yeah.
So what Christine and Carrie and Zach will do is just kind of go through what the whole concept is around this professional development initiative. Um, we're calling Medfield College, um, but more specifically, the work that we're doing around, um, educating in professional development for teachers around, um, social justice and cultural proficiency. So something that we've been, you know, working on the last couple of years. And, um, Christine's done a really good job, along with Mary Brule, to really bring this to the forefront with not only committee work, but also professional development. So I don't know if you can promote Christine and Carrie and Zach. I know they want to do a presentation so they can share, share their screen, I assume, as well.
Hi, everyone.
Hey. Do you want to let people know that they can make comments after Christine's presentation? If we have new people?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So.
Maybe I just did that for you.
Yes, she did. Thank you.
Sorry.
After their presentation, we will take, um, some public input, so, um, around this topic. So thank you. Thank you for the reminder, Jess. Alrighty, howdy, folks. Christine, Carrie, and Zach, welcome. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. And I, on behalf of Carrie and Zach, we're honored to be here. Uh, we're gonna be talking a little bit about the course. The Preparing Our Children course is really near and dear to our hearts. But in order to do that, I wanted to set the stage about Medfield College, just to explain, uh, the format in which the course had occurred, and then we'll continue from there. So I'm just going to share my screen for a moment. We're good? Okay. Okay. Ready? Okay. So, um, the course that occurred was the first of, of, we hope, many courses to occur uh, under the moniker of Medfield College. And it's really important for me to explain what Medfield College is before we go deeply into this one particular course. So what is Medfield College? Medfield College is a new approach to professional development. Now, professional development has, takes a variety of different forms. And the most common, what people most likely think is that, uh, a one-stop, sort of one, uh, single experience, or sometimes an experience that is done by a particular teacher off-site. So it may or may not be directly connected to the overall experiences. Medfield College looks to pull together the best practices in Medfield, uh, in professional development in order to support, um, Medfield, its teachers, its students, and its faculty. So what is it? It, it's basically university-quality courses that are created by Medfield Public School educators for Medfield Public School educators. And what do I mean by that? Um, it's, uh, courses that are developed, uh, that are disseminated to our courses K-12. And there's multiple benefits of this model, uh, one of which is a benefit to our district's teachers. Uh, the specific benefits are its content. It's meaningful content that's aligned to Medfield's unique context. With our context, with our history, with our, uh, students, it's really important to know what the curriculum is, what, uh, the areas of focus are, et cetera. And so our teachers are able to focus directly on professional development that is directly aligned to Medfield. Cost, it's generally low or no cost to the teacher themselves, uh, making that very interesting and very valuable to them, as well as convenience. It's either onsite or online, uh, making the opportunity just easier to obtain. There's also multiple opportunities for the instructors, and one of which is professional growth. It provides opportunities for veteran teachers to grow professionally without leaving the district. And, uh, I can speak as a veteran teacher who had left the district before coming back, uh, that there are many veteran teachers have much, many things to give, uh, to their fellow teachers, and they typically go outside. And it'd be, it's amazing how many of our fantastic teachers are teaching for different organizations in and around the Boston area. This provides an opportunity for our veteran teachers to share their gifts with others in a professional manner. Um, also, it's earning opportunities that our teachers have an opportunity to earn, uh, stipends, et cetera, to develop courses that are really aligned to our needs and, and the needs of our district. And finally, and this is something I'm incredibly excited about, is the benefits to the district. There are multiple benefits of this professional development model, including alignment to our district goals, as well as course, course content and our initiatives. Every year, we can survey what is the needs and what is the areas of focus that we need to focus on, and then hone our professional development opportunities based on those needs. There's shareable deliverables. What happens typically with courses is that teachers go and take a variety of different, really powerful and important courses that will benefit their classroom. But what happens is that they develop different projects that stay within them, which is great for their students. But this is an opportunity for teachers to share what they're doing with their peers, either their buildings or their peers in their department. Uh, and it's intended to, all the deliverables that are developed through the Medfield College model are meant to be shared amongst the district. And finally, it's really adaptable. Courses can be adjusted and adapted to meet teacher feedback and the evolving, evolving district needs on a dime. Example, with the COVID crisis, we were face-to-face. We went very quickly to an online model. Um, but we can also adjust any course offerings that we have based on changes in curriculum framework, also changes in terms of the needs of the community or the needs of our students. Now, with that said, um, I wanted to, I'm really happy to talk and introduce our first course, which is, uh, "Preparing Our Children to Thrive in an Increasingly Globalized World" course. It's the first offering. It was offered between February and June. And Zach Barrows and Carrie Cowell, who are here, are our first instructors, and they will be speaking about the course in a moment. But just to give you a little bit about the background, it's open to all Medfield educators, and we had educators on, across all five buildings participate. Now, the course, the genesis of the course was that it was designed to meet multiple district goals, one of which is that we really needed to support greater understanding and knowledge amongst our teachers about unconscious bias and cultural understanding in their curriculum and instruction. It's something that we were, uh, aware of and looking at best ways to doing that. And this way, we could have a large cohort of teachers go through and really unpack these really important concepts. Also, we needed a high-quality social studies curriculum aligned to the new state frameworks. New state frameworks came on board, um, and there is a need for student, for our teachers to really understand what they were and to develop curriculum that is aligned to that. And then, finally, I can't see my slide. Oops. Go back. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't see the bottom slide. Oh, wow.
The infusion of multicultural books into our library.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, I just can't see it in my screen. Um, yeah, so the final thing before I flip around my, is the, the last piece. We had, uh, a fantastic initiative, and that is to look at ways of infusing more culturally, uh, aligned books into our curriculum. And it was decided that our libraries were our best venue to do that in the elementary level. Typically, for instance, in social studies, there's no textbook that is, uh, that's used. It's usually storybooks and other types of books. So I worked closely with Carrie Cowell, who will be speaking in a moment, on thinking about best ways to do that. And so her project was just highlighted in a, a previous school committee meeting where she really worked, uh, looking through the holdings of the library. She ended up looking at, at, at different types of books that would be best to introduce into our library. And she'll talk a little bit more about that. But from my perspective, looking at from a curriculum perspective, it's looking at ways to support our teachers to actually use those books. It's not enough to have them in our libraries. It's to have them use them with their students every day. So with that, I'd like to introduce Zach and Carrie to talk about the course itself, its background, and also its impact on its instructors, uh, on its, um, students.
Right. Thank you so much, Christine. Um, so when Christine approached me, I get, if Christine had approached me about the course, I think, a week earlier, even though I think it sounds like a great idea, it probably would have been a hard no. Um, instead, I gave her a soft maybe. Um, but I really had, uh, had a pretty intense two days in a row right around the time I, Christine came to see me about the course. Um, one day, I'm in, in my classroom about to, my lunch is out in front of me, and, uh, one of my former students shows up at the door, and they were irate. And, you know, I told them, come on in and close the door. And this student was a student of color and, um, just started going off about white kids at the school using the N-word. And it was, it was really jarring. Um, and this student was really, really upset, and we spent the whole lunch, um, talking, you know, into reading period, you know, we, we just, just sat with that student as long as we needed to talk. And it was really, really intense and really eye-opening. And then the next day in class, um, a student who I love, a white student, explained how it was okay for white people to use the N-word in front of the whole class and felt comfortable sharing that. And, um, in front of, right, the closest person to that student was a, a totally different student of color. And, um, it was absolutely jarring. It was, uh, it was tough. And I, I didn't even want to talk about this in here, but I felt like we, we have to be honest about, about what we're up against. And so that was obviously, you know, I was like focused on the tight rope that I was on, never mind the other students in the classroom, specifically students of color, like, you know, just, it was a really, really difficult moment. And of course, a ton of stuff happened behind the scenes after that conversation. And we just, we talked to, we spent a long time talking about it in that moment. And then there was a lot of follow-up conversations with many students, with guidance, with lots of folks afterwards. And then Christine came to see me about this course. And, um, I know that, yeah, as the first slide, as the next slide said, uh, you know, we love every single student who comes into our classrooms. Um, we don't necessarily feel, um, fully equipped to support every single student and equipped for every single moment. And I know that for myself, but, you know, I've, I've been lucky to have a lot of experiences, you know, working around the world. Um, you know, working in situations where, um, really difficult conversations were happening on a daily basis. Um, not everyone has that experience, and even if you have that experience, it's still really hard. So when Christine came to see me, I was like, yeah, this is important. We really need to talk about this. And, um, I think it's so, so we spent a lot of time putting this course together. Getting to work with Carrie and Christine was amazing. Um, I remember early on Christine saying, you know, I know you two don't know each other that well, and, you know, I haven't figured out your workflow, how it's gonna happen. And now Carrie and I text each other all the time. We like, I have like a new, really good friend and someone who I feel like we, we can do real work together. And so we put this course together. We started out addressing race, racism. Um, but we didn't want to leave it there. There are so many students. We know that our students are struggling with a lot of different things. And some of our students aren't even necessarily struggling with these things, but they need to be addressed. And so, you know, LGBTQ plus, um, we talked about identities and faith, which was fascinating. We talked about, uh, mental illness. We talked about physical disabilities. It was, um, it was challenging, but the, the vulnerability and the willingness of our teachers to get really personal is what made this course. I think that, my personal belief is that what we need is softer hearts. I think that, my personal belief is that what we need is softer hearts, then the good ideas can help. And I think that we really moved the ball down the field with this course. So I know that Carrie has, Carrie's been unbelievable. I know a lot of you have worked with her, she's been absolutely phenomenal throughout this entire thing. And so Carrie, and I know that Carrie has some things that she wants to jump in with.
No, thanks so much, Zach. I feel the same way. So I also think, so thank you so much for, for having us here and for this opportunity. Just to dive into this course, when Christine first started talking about it, I had similar feelings as Zach did. Because like, I definitely don't feel equipped, I didn't feel equipped to run something like this. But the beauty of this course was that Zach and I were learning alongside everyone. And it was, you know, just this vulnerable, open, just having tough conversations that you don't get to have normally. And I think the students who are in this class totally like rose to the challenge of flipping from a face-to-face situation to having to go to online. And when Zach and I were kind of deciding, like, what do we do after March 12th? Like, do we stop this? I mean, we couldn't help but look around at the world and say, like, I feel like it's more important now than ever for, for us to continue these conversations and try to meet people where they were at. And the students, they were amazing, you know, and would meet in a virtual environment or have discussions on Google Classroom, which were so vulnerable and open and real. And I feel like we were really able to make some headway in all of those topics that Zach talked about. Because not only, yeah, thank you, Christine, not only were we like sticking to our syllabus, which we had to adapt, obviously, but we, we were seeing like this play out on a world stage. Because a lot of the things that we had been talking about were, were impacting the world at the same time. So we, I just, it, it blew our mind. Like, every week we would get these discussion boards going and Zach and I would be talking on the phone, like, oh my gosh. Like, you have to, like, reread this, this discussion board or, or did you see what this person just said? Because the students really helped us dig deeper. And it, it just shows us how much work there is to do. Because you know, this is only about 20, 20 staff members across Medfield. And there's so much work to do. And part of the power of this particular course is that we had preschool teachers and we also had, you know, teachers that were working with seniors. And so for, for our five islands of schools, it was so important to be in the same room or same virtual room together. And to, and I think it was pretty eye-opening for our social studies teachers at the high school to be hearing about, like, things that were really uncomfortable, that we're, we're not really talking about at the elementary level. So thinking of the book project that I started with Christine, that I feel so lucky, like almost the first or second week of school, we, we kind of started digging into the books. I have all of the books across all the libraries that are, they're amazing, but they, they are not moving, you know? And so there's so much work that needs to be done. And we have so many educators who, who are grappling with this. Christine, if you could go to the next slide. Because people, in order to understand, I mean, I'm, I'm still learning so much every single day. I am by no means an expert. I've learned so much through Zach alone, like Zach is unbelievable. I would pay money to go to his classes. But I think part of what I think the students alongside of us learned is that it's all work you have to do internally. And in order to get comfortable, in order to pick up a book that might be a tougher topic, it's, it's necessary and it has to be done. And if you don't want to pick that book up, you have to figure out why. Like, why does that one topic make you uncomfortable? And, and we have to dig in and have those conversations. So Zach, what else?
Yeah, I think that, no, no. I think that listening to the folks who you had on earlier who are retiring, I think was for me such a good reminder of like the warmth and love and like generosity of spirit in this district. And it was like, I feel emotional about it right now and I don't have relationships with any of those people. But it was like just a reminder from top to bottom in this district. Like, the other thing that I have pulled up, like I shared a harsh story, like I have students' responses about race in America that are so eloquent and so thoughtful and so heartfelt from anonymous Google Forms that are like, this is an extraordinary district and we saw that in this class from Christine and Jeff coming in on the very first day of the class to let everyone in there know that, hey, you have the support of the people at the very top of this district. And it was going all the way out to, like Carrie said, when we switched to online, we thought, hey, do we power this thing down? But I think that what we saw was this COVID hit our most vulnerable populations the hardest. And this work is about, specifically about supporting those populations and then also supporting everyone else. Like, hey, you're going into a very diverse world, a very connected world. And we need to know how to interact in respectful and loving ways. And so we realized that we couldn't bail on this and, you know, thank goodness we didn't. I think that I was hesitant to do any of it online at first. And then we saw, hey, doing some of it online allows some voices to be amplified more than others. I'm a face-to-face person, I want to be in the classroom, I want to have it out. And some really quiet folks made some of the most hard-hitting points in these discussion boards. And so, you know, we, that was a big learning thing for me, like, hey, it doesn't always have to be the same thing. It was, it was a really powerful experience. I think that the model itself, I think Christine's done great work, like setting this model up. I think that there's a lot of potential there. I think it's only going to continue to get better. And I'm just so thankful that we got to do this and that we did see it through. And it's really going to impact, ultimately, what matters is that this impacts our students' actual lives. And I know that the conversations that we had in there will, so I think it was a great first, I think it was a great first step.
I agree. So thank you. Jeff, what Zach said, that really resonated with people. Jeff showed up on the first class just to, to set the tone. And the students really appreciated that. And it was almost from that moment where it was like, okay, this is a safe space, you know, this is a priority for this district. And so with Christine bringing it here and just putting that emphasis on it and then even just allowing us to be here right now, I, we're so grateful. Because it's not, it's not about checking a box for Zach or for me, it never was. And obviously, because of COVID, you know, things are, things are tough. But I, I just feel honored that we were able to start something and that it's not, you know, it's not over. Because obviously Zach and I have ripple effects going, you can't just, can't unlearn any of this. So we appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. I think, um, I'm sorry, I just, um, I suppose I, um, oh, good, I'm dark.
I would, anime, while you get your, yes. Have you, I'll, I'll just, anime, I mean, one, one thing I, I comes to mind, one, and thank you, the material is phenomenal. Has me asking a lot of questions that we may not have time for. But is it, Christine, as you build this up, like something like this sounds like it was obviously impactful. You learned a lot. Then I think, oh, we did this, you know, for the 20 that were there. Do you, do you think about the program that says, hey, we have the one-hour version? At least, you know, this is what we're seeing, or Jeff, when you're talking about for your broader community. But I do love like the personalized aspect to, you know, take a Medfield perspective to something. Like, I guess the short version is, where do you go from here? You know, like this sounds amazing, but I'd love to hear what, where, where you guys go from here.
So we had, we had thought of a few different ideas. One is because of the work that Carrie and Zach did, we want, definitely want to offer this course again. It's, it's one of these courses that everyone should take and we can do it 20 at a time. And, and that will make an impact and we feel really strongly about that. So certainly we're going to have this course again and offer that. But as Christine had said before, I think it's really looking at some of the initiatives that we have as a district and trying to really tailor some of the, the content that we think is important and that our teachers can do a great job teaching their, their peers. So I think that's what we're looking at. But certainly, having this course again is, is a top priority for us for, for 2021. Whether that's in the spring or the fall. And then, you know, expanding it to other activities, other items that, that we feel are important. Christine, if you want to expand on that, feel free, but.
Yeah, the alignment to our district goals is so key and, and it allows us to be nimble. That's what this model is really great at. So this course for sure, the evaluations were out through the roof, I can tell you, they were wonderful. The, the people have told me how wonderful the experiences are. And many people who wanted to join who couldn't because of COVID or other reasons, it was just too much, they've reached out saying, can we offer it again? So yes, we definitely would like to offer it again and we can see expanding that throughout. And courses similar to this, again, meeting the needs of the community.
I, I suppose, I, thank you, Tim, for giving me that breathing space. Um, what I,
I was gonna ask it anyway, so don't worry.
Um, what I appreciate is the intention in this. I mean, Zach, for you to share that story, I, I think, you know, your honesty and that truth, that it, it exists here. And a lot of, um, a lot of folks wouldn't share that. And I'm sorry. Bottom line, I'm very grateful for this work. And I have a problem. And I just think there's a lot more work to be done. But I, I'm just so grateful that you, that you folks have, have done this and you're on this path. I mean, we've been on the path, I think, for, for a bit. But now it seems to be really kind of taking shape in a more meaningful way. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think, I mean, this work is obviously so important. And it's also, you know, obviously Carrie and I have talked about this before and we've been doing work around the community program review for the last couple of years. And I think it's so important to do this work thoughtfully so that we're bringing everybody along with us. You know, Zach, the kid who was saying or explaining how it was perfectly okay to use the N-word is, is a good kid who needs to, to learn perspectives in a way that we have not taught, in a way that we do not have the day-to-day experiences that that would show, you know, in a kind of social shaping way, how unacceptable that was. And I think all of these conversations are amazing. But I think that there is also a part of us that we need to have a very thoughtful conversation about how we represent ourselves. If we're saying that, if we're saying that we want to make sure that we have examined our own biases throughout our curriculum, then we also cannot continue to represent our district through a logo that is a Native American logo and continue to say that it is part of our heritage. We can't continue to essentially kind of tell the history of the victors in the way that we like to do that. And I think that there's so much good work that can also happen around that very specific and concrete example throughout the community. Because it is a symbol that people hold within the community as well as within our schools. There are so many other things that we can cover and we need to every day in our conversations personally. But I also think that it's, it's an important step to be thinking about. And I've said this before, we need be thinking about whether we are on the right side of history and whether we are truly honoring a part of the Native American peoples who've lived here. Or if we are using that excuse to keep hold of something we feel is important to us, but we haven't truly examined in a way that's important and heartfelt. And if we, if we don't continue to use that logo, then what do we do? Who are we if we aren't, you know, Medfield warriors? Or if we aren't represented by that specific logo? So, I mean, I think that there's so much work happening on the inside. But I also think that there's a really important amount of work to be happening that, that branches and roots through the community as well. We can teach our kids everything in the world, we can teach our students and our, our staff and ourselves. But if we aren't growing through the community, in a community in which school is so important, I think we're not doing enough. So, but I do appreciate that. I know what an incredibly hard worker you are, Carrie. I mean, I've worked with you and it's, it's kind of amazing to people. And I, I can really tell Zach that you care so much about this as well. And I actually look forward to someday maybe being able to sit in on that class. I'm just saying, you know, auditing.
We'll give you a discount.
But you better pay up, because we need the money.
But you're gonna charge her, Jeff.
So thank you for letting me have my spiel there. But I don't think that we can, I don't think that we can have this conversation without really thinking about, do we do what we say we do? Anybody else? That's my monologue for tonight.
Thank you. Before you folks leave, I did, I believe, Owen, can you please pop over Alexis Hill? She's got her hand raised and I think she has a statement to make from, from what I understand.
Yeah, I just want to roll over.
Oh, goody, thank you.
Okay, am I on?
We hear you, Alexis.
Oh, okay, I'm used to seeing myself. I, I can't even tell if I'm in the screen correctly. Okay, well, yes, actually Jessica's points and, and that subject is perfect segue. And, and I, I'm gonna read parts of a letter that we're gonna submit electronically that also has some agenda that are a little bit lengthy and not appropriate for this context. So here's part of the letter that we're gonna be submitting electronically. "A growing coalition of concerned alumni, students, parents, teachers, coaches, town residents and others question the suitability of the Medfield Warrior. We would like to work with you to achieve community consensus to abolish the mascot as a symbol of our town. This letter is an invitation for collaboration and a request for the matter to be put on a future agenda." And I just wanted to interject that when Zach told the anecdote about the N-word, for many of us, seeing that image feels like seeing the N-word every single time we see it. And to frame this issue, we wanted to share a little bit of Kurt Jackson's June 18th Medfield hometown weekly letter to the editor, in which he described his new understanding of the unintentional harm caused by the logo. And again, in our agenda, for the record and for future conference, future reference, the entirety of his letter and then some selected attachments are gonna be in the agenda. "Mr. Jackson joined the call for, quote, 'a more appropriate symbol,' end quote, explaining in part, 'I designed an altered version of Medfield's Warrior logo for the seniors' rolling rally. There was a lot of positive feedback from it and plans to reproduce it. I decided this week to research how Native Americans generally feel about how sports teams portray them as mascots. My eyes were open to their hurt, suffering and negative stereotyping. This has become a teachable moment. I think the class of 2020 deserves a more appropriate symbol that represents their pride and perseverance. And so do the Native Americans, but who says they want one?" And Mr. Jackson's letter illustrates that many people may not understand why the image is harmful as in Zach's anecdote about the N-word, someone genuinely not understanding why it's not okay. But his letter also illustrates that once educated, they do in fact understand and they do seek solutions. Community organizing and education efforts are critical to answer his final question. Let us augment that question to ask, what do concerned parents, residents, alumni and other students want? Let us augment that question to ask, what do concerned parents, residents, alumni and other students want? To many in this community, the question of appropriateness of Native American mascots was answered decades ago by many mainstream organizations such as the National Congress of American Indians, the National Education Association, the NAACP, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, the American Psychological Association, the NCAA, the Massachusetts Teachers Association. We appreciate that progress can be slow and changing hearts and minds takes time. We seek to partner with the school committee to develop opportunities to build a more actively anti-racist learning community. Thoughtful dialogue about the warrior is one critical step in that process. We respectfully request that while this coalition grows, the school committee contemplate its basic starting position that the mascot is not in line with national education standards. We hope the school committee can join us in taking a public proactive position on this issue. This coalition is committed to community outreach, education and consensus building. And we, as a town, continue, as we, as a town, continue on the complex and unceasing journey of making Medfield Public Schools a safer and more just educational system for all students. And again, uh, more references and the entirety of the letter will be submitted electronically.
Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you very much, Alexis. It was thoughtful. I I read that, I I read that editorial by Kurt and I was, that prompted me to do my own research. And I think we're on this journey and um, sorry. And I think, but what you said in terms of collaborating and thoughtful dialogue, I think, um, you know, it's it's not on for a vote this evening, and I know you know that. Um, but this is something that I think we need to begin the conversations about the mascot and have a more thoughtful dialogue with various constituents in our town. And um, and I think this is, this is the the beginning. And I do appreciate all that, the thoughtfulness that went into this. And I think this um, this is the time to look at this. And um, so this will be, we will figure this out, we will um.
Adam Chair, I recommend that we put it on the next agenda for a more formal conversation.
Yeah, and I think it's just not gonna be just, I I think we're gonna, um, so the next, our next, and I think we're gonna get to it in the agenda, you know, our next meeting is July 18th. And I and I think we need to talk about, is that a thoughtful time? When people are away for the summer at the Cape or whatever, are we really, you know, if we want to have a thoughtful conversation, is July a good time? You know, so I think.
Well, I wonder if that conversation that we had would be more of a planning conversation for a course of action.
Yeah.
That would allow planning for those alternative dates.
Yeah.
Um, as opposed to a, not not like a swift vote or of any kind, but more of a a conversation of the action items to be established to engage in the process that's required to get the input that's needed. Uh, and then, uh, you know, appropriate action items, you know, as a result of that.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I would say too, Madam Chair, you know, one of the things that, you know, we've had a kind of a weird spring here and COVID has messed up a lot of our plans. And um, one of the things that we had scheduled was Dr. Nataya Greendeer, who was a citizen of the Wampanoag tribe, was gonna be working with our elementary teachers to talk a little bit about the Native American perspective in terms of the Thanksgiving feast and that whole process that elementary teachers do. And then then bring that into the state of Massachusetts, which is part of the the elementary curriculum as well. And we were gonna talk to her about her feelings on the mascot. And that was gonna be, that was in our plan that we did months ago, but certainly got messed up because of COVID-19. But certainly it's something we've been thinking about for the last couple of years. And our, we had to redo our our, for the Tri-County League, they have a banner that hangs in every single gymnasium in the Tri-County League. And the Native American was on there forever and ever. And we had to redo it this year, and we chose to put the the block M on there and not the Native American, so that every school in the Tri-Valley has that hanging in their gym. And there's no longer the Native American from Medfield, it's the M. So we've, we've been trying to address that and and, but certainly this is the time to have a more thoughtful conversation around that.
I mean, I think that there's also a part of it in which, um, when I look at, you know, buying things that have Medfield spirit or whatever, so much of this is no longer even centered on the schools, but on town sports leagues or that the PTO offers, you know, kind of options now. But there's, but we're still selling things with the Native American warrior. And there's, uh, you know, uh, car magnets that are being sold. And so there's a real kind of significant need to have a conversation with the community too about what we do. How do we, as a community, do this? Because otherwise, and I think I said this to one of the the people who had written to me, otherwise we're going to be playing whack-a-mole with this particular logo for the next 10 to 15 years as it kind of comes up and down and people are like, oh, but I want to be old Medfield and I feel like that's not my community. And so if we don't bring everyone along with us, and I'm not saying that everyone is going to understand the reasons, but I at least want to be able to have the opportunity to share more information than to simply hand down a decision from the top. And I think that we've always waited for the community to come to us and say, this is something that that you want as well. And up until a year or so ago, people were still saying, Medfield Warrior is our warrior. More people were saying, I don't, I don't like this at all. But there was still a lot of, there are still a lot of people who say that this is, this is theirs. So how do we bridge and not split our community? And how do we make this, how do we do this in the most honorable way possible and most thoughtful way possible, bringing the most people along with us? So I guess that's my my ring of thought about it. And I do appreciate how much outreach you've done, Alexis, and very many other of your of your coalition. And we've gotten a lot of alumni letters and it's very nice. I love the engagement, so thank you.
And I'd just like to chime in here with my a couple of comments as well. And Alexis, I also want to commend you on that very thoughtful letter and a lot of the research. And just what you had said just now about, that's my community, that's, that's what represents my community. To me, the word community means representative of everyone. Everyone is part of this community. So if there is something that is decisive or offensive or repulsive to any constituents in a community, then we don't really have a community. In fact, we have divisions. And so I think that this is the exact opportunity with whatever is going on in the world. This is the exact time that we need to be having this conversation within Medfield. And I appreciate Alexis and her invitation to collaborate and not making it, just doing it in the nature of, let's all come up with this together and we'll all have these important discussions. So thank you, Alexis, for coming tonight and speaking.
Well, thank you very much for letting me speak. I really appreciate it. And um, again, we, our letter has a little bit more on some of the the points that various folks have brought up. And we have a lot of eager people who want to help, who want to, you know, engage in constructive dialogue. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would conclude on this, just my my opinion. I like Leo, what you said, really, what can we do? One of my favorite expressions is, we want to do it right first, rushed second. I'm leaning a lot more towards right and rushed, go hand in hand here. And I just think, I'd like to hear and, you know, hear from those that really have issues if we were to make changes. And but, you know, in general, I just think it feels right and relative sooner rather than later is is my, jumps off the page, I think.
That's why I feel like I think we owe it to establish those action items. I I understand the timing of July, a difficult time to get equal input from the community with the vacation schedules and whatnot. But as long as we are taking the appropriate action to establish what needs to be done, um, I, um, you know, so that it's well communicated and there's time to, you know, to establish that, the flow that needs to be, needs to occur for the actions and the feedback.
Beautiful. I think those, all those points are very well taken, you know, calling people in, bringing them in instead of calling people out. And then also, um, our next meeting, we can start talking about how we can engage the community. And um, so that'll be on the next agenda. All righty, well, super.
There's one comment here, actually, from Karen Schaefer. If that's all right. She said, I wonder what Mr. Disorger, as our town historian, might suggest besides our beloved, unique Warrior logo? And that's actually, that's interesting. Because I went to see Richard doing a presentation, what he called his kind of revamped presentation on the the burning and the attack on Medfield. And the, and it really does seem to me, and he was able to say himself, that his thinking on this has really evolved. And he would be, I think, probably a very interesting person to bring in, somebody that a lot of people in town respect and remember and may have some insight into that as well, so.
Yeah.
All about the coalitions, right?
Yeah, um, he's got it, he's got the history on the logo that some folks have have investigated. So we can, we can delve into that as well. So, um, perfect. Well, unless somebody else has something to say, I want to thank Zach and Christine and Carrie. Thank you very much. I'm most grateful for the work ahead and the work thus far, so thank you.
Thank you both very much. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much.
The engine behind like virtually everything right now. I just know how hard you're working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you too, Dr. Marsh.
Here and there.
Here and there.
All right, lovely. Um, so FY21's superintendent accept board appointment.
So this is something you typically do in September, but we just wanted to kind of check this one off the list and get it done now before. I think the tech won't be coming up over the summer as well. So I would just ask that you vote to appoint me to serve on the accept board of directors again.
Okay, so moved by Leo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jess, we'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley.
Aye.
Oh, Leo Brem.
Aye.
Megan Glenn.
Aye.
Tim Knight is back in the tropics.
All right, sorry I had to minor logistics, I was on all the time.
Anne Mae O'Shea.
Aye.
Aye, all right, super, thank you. So you're on the board, all right, beautiful. Um, summer meeting dates, briefly spoke about that.
Right, so Anne Mae, you and I talked about that. There in your materials, some preliminary draft dates, if it works for you, I would ask that you vote to accept. If not, we can certainly look at our calendars and and change. But we had July 16th, July 30th, August 13th and August 27th. And this, you know, we typically don't meet in July, but given the agenda item, we'll be talking about pretty soon the reopening and some of the changes, we'll have to get together and have meetings during the summer. So if those work, fine, if not, we can open up the calendars and check for different dates.
I got nothing, as long as I have Wi-Fi. Assuming, I need to be over, so.
What are the rules on calling in? I may not, I might have to call in. I don't know if I'll have Wi-Fi.
I think you can call.
You can call, yes, yeah.
July 16th, yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'm, you won't be able to see my shining face, but you'll hear me.
Yeah.
Now, Wi-Fi in Fiji, is it?
Oh, you're going to Fiji?
Yeah.
No, you're going to the same Wi-Fi as Leo, right? Are you going to Chicago?
Uh, hopefully.
Yeah, it's pretty bad here, yeah.
All right, so I think we need to vote on those dates. So do we have a motion to approve this added July?
I moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Jess Riley.
Aye.
Leo Brem.
Aye.
Megan Glenn.
Aye.
Tim Knight.
Aye.
Great, Anne Mae O'Shea, aye, thank you very much. And again, we will, as things come out, we may have to add meetings, change dates. We'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll go with the flow.
Go with it, yeah.
All right, and any other items since posting?
I have none.
Okay. Um.
Did we want to quickly talk about the resolution that the MAS C has asked us to do about COVID-19 funding?
Yes, please, sorry about that, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine. So many districts throughout, throughout Massachusetts, I think it's upwards of 60 or 65 at this point, have, have passed resolutions regarding COVID-19 state funding. And their boiler point plate is here. And that it says, whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation and material expenses required to do this. And whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible and equitable. And there can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. That's the the draft that the MAS C has been putting out. And I know that they are, they're asking school committees to consider it. They'd obviously like it sooner rather than later. But I'm not sure it would be acceptable for us to vote on it, given that we didn't have it on the agenda before this point. So.
Right.
We need to put it off to the next meeting that we have? Or do we have a meeting that's happening before?
I'm guessing.
Meeting like we ordinarily do?
I'm, Jeff, I think we're probably gonna have a meeting as soon as Desi comes out with some more guidelines, correct?
We'll be meeting as soon as tomorrow, then, I assume.
I reckon.
So we, we could have one whenever you want. We don't need to have 48 hours to post, because it's not an emergency situation. But whenever, you know, if we want.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to meet just for this, but we obviously do need to do one once the guidelines.
Because I think we we did say that we would have, once the guidelines come out, we would have a listening session, so it wouldn't just for the the resolution. So we could do, we could do both.
Do you want to shoot for next Monday?
Yes, why don't we? To just.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Get it on the calendar and then, because we'll have guidance by then. And we can each.
Give Jeff's team some time to look at it too and digest it about impact, yeah.
Okay, let me look at my calendar.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, and then, so we're not doing one before town meeting, obviously, because town meeting is so fairly rudimentary this year on Saturday. Is it Sunday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. All right.
All righty, so next Monday, what is that, the 29th?
29th.
It is.
Okay, lovely.
Is that, will we do an executive session as well? So will that be a 5:00 and a 5:30, or should we just, we'll announce that as we go?
I would say probably based on our conversation, executive session today, we probably would need another one.
Right.
With an update. So we'll do a 5:00 and 5:30, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Great. And um, thank you, Jess, for doing that. Old Business Educational Stability Policies, first reading.
So I know the subcommittee has been working with Mary on this, so I don't know if there's any comments or questions from the subcommittee, but I know we've had a couple of meetings going over this. But we, as your policy states, we need to have two readings before you can, or you can vote on the second reading, but it needs to be on the agenda twice. So I don't know if anyone in the subcommittee wants to address it at all, but I know Mary, Mary was here a couple of meetings ago that explained all of it.
Right, yeah, uh, Tim?
Updates, anything change?
Yeah, I would just, I'll just pull it up, I, hold on a sec, because I would need to pull it up. We've conducted the review on the policies, all of which are in the packet. And Megan and I, and Megan, I'm not speaking on your behalf. I think we are very comfortable with the language and and we would, you know, propose everybody. um, with the language and, and we would, um, you know, propose, uh, everybody, um, moving forward with those as, as they, as they're described in the packet. And, and Megan, please, if, I, I don't mean to bring it up unless there's another comment first, but.
You all hadn't had a chance to read through them yet. If you wanted to take this, this time to do it and then at the next reading or meeting, then we could approve them. That, I mean, I've already kind of gone through them with Mary.
Yeah, nothing jumped out at me that was concerning. If you recommend it, yep.
So nothing's changed from Mary's presentation?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Alright. So we will vote at the second reading, correct?
Right.
Okay, great. Alright, super. Thank you very much. Um, Dale Street School Project?
So we are, are still plugging along. We had our meeting last week, uh, got to see some, some more up to date sketches of, of the buildings, taking a look at what a 4.5 may look like on the Dale Street and what a 3.45 may look like at Dale Street and the same thing at the Wheelock site. So I think, you know, what was very helpful for me was seeing the 3D renditions of what the building's gonna look like on those sites. And I think that really puts it in, in perspective of what, what it's gonna look like in terms of the neighborhood and how, and how that could, um, you know, support the learning of our students. So I thought that was really, really helpful, uh, at the last meeting. Um, but we're still, you know, getting to the point where we need to adjust that timeline where you folks have to look at grade configuration, um, and vote that. And then look at site selection too from the, the building committee. So we had left it, Anne Mae, I think, at the last building committee meeting where it was still in, in August vote, uh, for the school committee on grade configuration. And I know that we, we had some concerns about that. Again, the same reason why we were talking about, uh, with the mascot, just not a great time of year having public forums and conversations around important issues like that. Uh, but I don't know how much a September vote on that would, would throw off our schedule going forward. So I know it's something we need to talk about and discuss to see when you're ready for it.
I think we need to hash that out perhaps by our next meeting and, and really nail that down so that the public's informed as well and we can communicate that over the summer. Um, yeah, because I know they're also planning a, a public forum on the site selection as well.
Right.
That's on the docket as well. And we just want to give folks as much, uh, as many opportunities to engage as possible. Um, yeah.
Yes, I think that, uh, the, the most recent, uh, or the most up to date milestone calendar is on our website. Andrea, if you can, if you're listening to, is that the most recent one that's posted? It is, okay. So that is, the most recent one is posted, uh, so if anyone needs to go to the milestone calendar, that is all there. You know, that changes almost weekly, uh, but I think we probably have to have a conversation around when, what impact that makes, uh, for, especially, especially for Arrow Street on their timetable. If we, if we wait till, you know, early September to do that vote. You know, I think that's something we gotta figure out. Maybe put that on the agenda for next week maybe and try to nail down.
Yeah.
We can connect with, um, Arrow Street in Left Field maybe.
Then we can always tweak some meeting dates to, to make it work.
Right, right.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Jeff, I would also say one of the other takeaways last week, uh, don't be nailing in any bird feeders into the fields over at Wheelock because the water table's only four or five feet down, so you might spring a leak.
Right, that's correct.
Which was very interesting. That, that sounds awfully shallow to me. I don't know.
And I think. Most of Medfield?
Well, it's 15, I think it's 15 feet at Wheelock or something like that.
Oh, so Dale Street it's only four or five, or isn't it Wheelock that it?
Dale.
Uh, Dale.
Yeah.
That was some of the results that came back from their, uh, from their testing.
I'm not actually surprised by that. I, I lived downtown for a long time and, um, the year after I moved out, we had that horrible, horrible rainy, rainy spring. And a lot of people in the middle of town found out that there was a 500-year, uh, underground river that went into the stop river from, from Rhinebrook and a lot of flooded basements there. So I'm not, I'm not surprised by that. I'm actually a little surprised that Wheelock isn't, uh, that it, that Wheelock's not as shallow, but, you know. Basically, whole place is a swamp. A swamp we love, but it's, it's a swamp.
And they're, they're finishing up a lot of the testing, the board testing, what, what Leo was talking about is already completed, but they're still doing more testing around both sites and trying to get information to provide to the building committee. So that's, that's ongoing right now.
Sure. Alrighty, anything else on Dale Street? No. Um, FY21 budget?
So, um, as we go into town meeting on Saturday, uh, the budget was, you folks voted the budget at the last, not the last workshop, the meeting before that. Uh, so we voted that number and, uh, we implemented the reductions and cuts that we did at the last workshop. So we informed folks that, um, were being laid off. We sent them their letters and also anyone that was being reduced from the full-time status, uh, we let them know that as well. So those, those letters went out. Um, obviously never an easy process to go through, uh, but we, we, again, it's, this is all part of, you know, usually have a face-to-face meeting with these kinds of things. That just wasn't possible. So, um, unfortunately, we couldn't, we couldn't do that. But we, we took care of all the letters, did all that and we're hopefully, that hopefully town meeting passes the budget you voted.
Alright, great. Um, and school reopening update?
So, um, it's been an interesting week or so around the school reopening front. Um, as I, as I mentioned to you, um, last week, the commissioner had a meeting last Saturday afternoon with, um, 15 superintendents, which I was one of, uh, just trying to get some feedback on some of the potential models they were gonna do in the, in the guidance. So it was, you know, really good meeting, uh, provided as much feedback as we could. Uh, some of the areas that, I mean, they were super thoughtful as far as, is how they want, they want to do the reopening and what kind of model that looks like. And again, I can't get into details, uh, but I, because it is gonna be released by the governor, I was told tomorrow. Uh, so I think they really put a lot of effort into it, listened to people, uh, looked at things from other, looked at models from other countries that have been successful up until now. So many countries have gone back to school, um, after they experienced COVID and the things that have worked well, uh, they, they've implemented and we've gotten some of that information. Uh, so that was that Saturday. And then on this past Friday, uh, the commissioner had a meeting, um, confidential meeting with all superintendents to give us kind of a, a preview of what the guidance is going to be uh, for, with the governor's release to, so we could take a look at it, uh, give some feedback again and also start planning for, for different scenarios. So, um, I believe that there'll be, um, a release and a, and a presentation from the governor either tomorrow or Wednesday, uh, that outlines what the options are for reopening in September with the caveat that there'll be additional final guidance given to all school districts in the late July, early August. So this will be the first run of guidance that will get us into a place where we can plan for that, for, for the opening. And then if things change, for instance, if there's another spike in COVID, uh, the, the numbers have been trending in a positive way right now. Uh, if that continues, then we'll probably go with the initial guidance, but we, you know, the state reserves the right to change that. For about three or four, uh, four hours today, the leadership team and I, uh, we did a retreat onsite. It's the first time we've all been together in the same room, uh, physically distanced since March. So it was nice to see everyone, not on a screen. And, uh, we spent some time looking at, reflecting on what the last three months have been like, what we accomplished, what was done really well, uh, what are things that we can improve on? And then what are some of our takeaways now going forward? Um, so we talked about that for the beginning. The second half is I, I shared some of what I think the guidance will be this week and to really try to, uh, set us up for tomorrow when we get together again and start to plan for these different options, what they may look like in anticipation that the guidance will become final tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday, and then we can go full steam ahead. So we, we've really spent some time on the reflection piece. Now we're working on moving forward and then, um, looking at setting up building-based teams with the principal, the nurse, uh, and then other key people, teachers, teacher leaders, uh, technology folks and, and really try to have not only a district-level team, but also individual building teams to really look at the implementation of the reopening. Uh, I, I will say this, that if the real, if the reopening guidance that I heard about last week is what is actually presented, I think it's, it's trending in a much more positive way, uh, for the district. So, uh, I think if that's, if that is the case, we'll be in better shape than we were a couple of weeks ago. But certainly, things can change as they have been almost weekly with COVID-19 and what's going on. So I can't get into the specifics, but certainly we can spend some time next week on that as soon as we get the release, um, from the state on that.
Jeff, uh, as for the district-wide, um, task force, your team you're putting together, what types of community members will you have as part of that team or, or parents or, and how do you go about getting those people?
Yeah, Megan. So I think, you know, one of the things that we had originally talked about doing a district-wide and then, uh, with my conversation with Christine Treewiler, she was trying to do the same thing and tap into the same people, which made sense instead of duplicating efforts. Um, but I will say it's, as we get closer to this now, the school's a very different animal than the town at this point with COVID-19. Um, there's definitely a, um, a different scope of issues that come into opening a school versus reopening the town. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that this week and see, you know, what makes the most sense. Um, because I, you know, we went for just school only and then the combination of school-town with a subcommittee of school. But we kind of, I think we need to revisit that based on, on what the scope of our work really has to be, so.
And you wait till after you hear whatever news is coming out tomorrow or Wednesday and then meet with Christine and kind of revisit that?
Yeah, this week we're gonna do that, just to see, because I think, I just think the scope is just larger with us, you know, as far as what we have to do. And it, you know, you're talking about academics, you're talking about, um, student-staff safety, you're talking about transportation, talking about the, the business aspect of it, all these different facets that, um, it's just different, you know, and I think that's what we need to look at, uh, from a very different lens. Either way works because we're, we're gonna have the same people, border health, uh, nurse leader, you know, those kinds of folks on there. But I don't want to, I, I appreciate the volunteer time that people have and I don't want to have people come out to different, different meetings if we're gonna duplicate the same conversation, so. But it's gonna serve as an advisory, you know, because I think that, the, the nuts and bolts and the weed stuff, we really have to take care of as a leadership team, but the advisory piece of what it's gonna look like for families is really important for us to get.
I was just, I'm wondering if there would be, you know, um, I've had heard a lot from parents of younger children, but I think it'd be helpful to have kind of representation from younger children, middle school children, high school. So everybody is kind of collaborating all together and it's not just isolated information. So I just didn't know if, how we were gonna solicit that information from.
Yeah, I think originally, you know, we're looking at, and, and we originally talked about it at a meeting. I did get a couple of emails from parents saying they were interested. Um, but I think we look at, at folks that are engaged right now or have a specific skillset that could help us out with, with that. And so we're trying to reach out. I definitely want to get a couple of kids on there as well. Uh, at least, at least on the subcommittee, you know, having at least a middle school, high school student as far as, you know, to get their feedback on what it looks like too. So I think that's what we're looking at. It's just, you know, we're supposed to get guidance a couple of weeks ago. Then it was supposed to be Friday and now it's tomorrow. So I just, it's, it's a little frustrating with that piece and I understand. I, I have to say that, um, the team that's assembled at the state level that's looking at this is really second to none in terms of the, the research that they shared with us this past week and the folks they have from MGH in Beth Israel and children's that are just top-notch physicians and medical folks that are really helping out with this guidance and decision. So I, I feel pretty confident with what they give us based on the, the people that are, you know, giving the, the guidance and the feedback, um, and the recommendations.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Michael, how are you, um, are you running into any barriers or difficulties with getting, uh, some of the supplies that they were, that the original guidance asked for you to get?
Um, so far, uh, the only thing that is in back order is hand sanitizer.
Oh, really?
We have pretty much secured three months' worth of, um, supplies that we need, except for hand sanitizer.
It's so interesting. I was in Pennsylvania this week and I, I literally with my mask on, washing my hands, walked into a Walmart and just picked up Lysol wipes off the shelf and hand sanitizer off the shelf. It's really interesting, just the differences, I think, geographically in terms of supply. It's amazing.
Chicago is clean out of all of that.
Yeah.
There's no wipe, no isopropyl alcohol, nothing around here. You cannot find it still.
Walmart?
Looks like there's no light bulbs either.
No light bulbs. You know, actually, I had to go find some light bulbs.
Sorry. No light bulbs? I just had to add a little humor once in a while.
Good one, Mr. Knight. Just totally missed it. Poor one for Mr. Knight. I totally missed it. I was, I was, yeah. I spent a couple of days with my parents.
Oh.
I would, I would also add, um, just one other piece that, uh, one of the things that the commissioner is recommending that we do, and we're trying to do this on a regional level, so a few superintendents and I were trying to, um, in the tri-county area, trying to just do this so we're not, again, duplicating efforts and reinventing the wheel, do the same work. Uh, he's recommending that we survey parents just to get it, after the guidance is out for a week or two, to let people digest it and, and just get a sense of what folks are thinking in terms of transportation, uh, in, in terms of whether or not they, um, want to send their kid back to school, any concerns that they have. So, you know, similar to what you folks are gonna do with listening and, and getting feedback, uh, from parents, we'll also send one out probably the end of July that give us a better sense. Because the transportation piece is really gonna be challenging for everybody. So if we're gonna have to physically distance in a bus and only have, say, one student per seat, um, that's gonna be really challenging for us with 18 or 20 buses. So, and, and everyone else as well, not just Medfield. So I think, you know, those are the kinds of, of data points that we need so that we can properly plan in August and make sure that we have, because, you know, we may be in a situation, do we have to adjust school start times? If we have to do a couple of different runs, so all these, all these different things that we need to do. Uh, if we go back to school and we're going back on the bus, um, that we'll, we'll have to plan for. So we'll be surveying parents.
Around drop-off.
Well, and more runs is, uh, is more fuel too, right? I mean, higher transportation costs, right?
Yeah, it, it is, but I will, you know, if we get to that point, I will certainly remind our bus company that when we, when we drop down a tier, um, there was no refund there. So, um, you know, it's gotta, it's gotta work both ways in that situation. So we'll see how that, how that goes. But, uh, I, I think it's, you know, well, there's a lot to be done this summer and there'll be a lot of reach-out conversations. I will however, as I said before, I will now have people sign in their email address when we do any surveys from this district that, that I'm in charge of, because the last thought exchange, uh, where people were not required to do that, um, some pretty nasty things out there that I'm not sure people would say if they actually had to put their name to it, so. Just to be clear.
And, uh, you know, stacking of the deck too, where they're trying to use the same IP address.
Yeah, well, that.
There was that one there.
That was on the Dale Street, right? So I mean, the Dale Street had, you know, 25 from one address, 13 from another. So I, I think it's important for people just to sign in and be accountable that way, so. So that's where we are.
Beautiful.
Well, we're everywhere and nowhere. Alright.
So future agenda items.
No, thanks.
Oh, sorry. Um, future agenda items, FY21 budget, Dale Street project, again, challenge, success, student feedback, social, emotional learning, educational stability policy review, standard-based report card feedback, um, the diversity, equity, inclusion, that's gonna be on it specifically for the mascot to, to start discussing that more openly. And, um, Dale Street School Project, you know, to solidify the date. Any other items or closing statements?
Are those all for the meeting Monday or?
No, no.
They're gone.
Sure.
Yeah, just future, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know.
But it, it does seem like we're kind of getting, because we've had to spend so much time on budget and, and COVID.
Everything's, a lot of things.
Yeah, we're getting behind a bit.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll catch up.
It's good that we'll have all these meetings.
Right.
Um, closing statements, um, Megan?
Um, yeah, I think this was a good meeting. Again, you're right. We have spent so much time talking about budget that it was kind of, it was nice to get away from it a little bit. Um, but that being said, I But that being said, I do plan to attend, hopefully not in sweltering heat. The, the meeting on Saturday, the town meeting. And again, I just want to say, I thank the people that came to share the updates, the PTO, the MCP, the Theater Society, and MMA, all the great things that happen in our town, in our community, and segue into making that community an inclusive one for all, and one that everyone feels comfortable with the represented, representation. And just happy summer to everybody. I guess we'll see each other a lot more than we normally do over the summer, virtually, at least. So, that, that's.
Um, Tim?
Yeah, no, I echo what Megan said, a huge, huge thank you to our partners. And thank you in advance, I mean, it's more than financial support, it's the input and helping us out, because we're really gonna need just input from some of the structured organizations like the PTO. So, I think that was, that was a highlight for me, just, and I also, Christine in the Medfield College, I think, very timely. I'm glad we have at least a foundation in place for some of these other topics down the road, so. Other than that, I appreciate you for your time, it's a marathon meeting, but we've got a lot, a lot of ground to cover, so. Thanks for all the work that everyone's doing.
I'm, I'm quiet. I'm not gonna say anything, go ahead.
Yeah?
Okay, well, I want to echo, this was a very powerful presentation by Christine and Carrie and Zach, and I think that it's definitely, I'm pleased that, you know, our district was, you know, been working towards this, despite what has obviously, you know, become a larger issue with current events. And then it's echoing, you know, the continued work that we need to do as a community. And I'll say that I'm happy that this has come up, and that it's moving forward. And I'm sorry for putting the pressure to work on this more over the summer and continue it into the fall, but I think it's just important, and I know you all know it's important, and so I guess I'll thank the committee and the community for its self-reflection, and its ability to self-reflect and to grow, so. And that's my closing statement.
Jessica?
And I'll work on the light bulbs, I'll work on the light bulbs.
I have nothing?
Nope, I'm not believing you.
Jeff?
I would just like to thank our community partners, I mean, it's, we just can't do it without these organizations, and you know, I think you heard the money totals and what they do for volunteerism, and the amount of hours that's put in, and it's just, you know, this year is gonna be really difficult, this year and next year probably financially, so we're gonna try to lean on them a little more than usual, but the amount of hours that these groups volunteer on behalf of our kids just is amazing, and I just want to thank all of them for that.
Thank you, and thank you to all the folks who attended, Alexis and I can hear the other statements. So, thank you, alrighty, so we'll see you guys Saturday or Monday, right?
Alright.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconds by.
Second.
Okay, Tim, so Leo, then Tim. Roll call, Jess Riley.
Here, aye.
Megan Glenn.
Aye.
Tim Knight.
Aye.
Leo, Brem.
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brook? Here, aye, alright, thank you very much, folks.
Alright, guys.
Thanks.
Ciao, ciao.